Comment was interesting.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks a lot for joining us. This is the Aspen City Council Work Session for September 23rd, 2024. Tonight, we have three items. We start with an airport update. Then, we're going to discuss the 2024 Aspen Community Survey Results and discussion around the... Third is a discussion around the United States Forest Service Administrative Site Update. And we'll get started right away with airport information. Dan and Bill want to come up to the front.
Dan, why don't you kick things off, and I'll run us through the agenda?
Sure, be happy to do that. So, Dan Bartholomew, I'm the Airport Director at the Aspen-Pickton County Airport. And I'm just here more to... I can answer any direct questions you have about the airport moving forward, what we're planning on, why we're planning on doing it, what the FAA's plans are. I can't really get into, because there's a ballot initiative with Pickton County, I can't really get into any opinions about things, but I can more than happy to give you facts. And if there's some misinformation out there, I'm more than happy to set that straight as well. But I believe Bill has a kind of a presentation of some basic things that we can walk through a little bit.
Sure, along with some general facts that I want to make sure everybody's aware of here related to the airport. And you know, the title of this is "An Airport Update", and there are certainly some facts that we can share. So, I've really got six key takeaways, and Dan and I are going to kind of pass things back and forth here on some of the key points I want you all to be aware of. But I think most importantly, the commercial air service we have right now into the Aspen-Pickton County Airport has never been better, both in peak season, winters and summers, and very importantly, year-round for service to the locals. And one measurement of that is we've recognized that more locals are flying out of the Aspen Airport than ever before. In fact, for the calendar year of 2023, it was 28.5% of all the travelers were locally originating from the Aspen Airport, you know, which suggests that just over 70% are actually inbound visitors. So, that number continues to grow, and that's also, it's really where the growth we're seeing is in the shoulder seasons, in the spring and the fall, particularly April, not so much May because of the airport closure, but October and November is where we've seen a lot of that growth. And it's definitely a huge issue with local... Increased local usage, as witnessed by, you know, we now have parking issues at the airport, particularly in months like right now. Third key takeaway, the runway is in dire need of replacement. Dan's going to go into some details on that, and there is an airport layout plan that's been approved by the Board of County Commissioners that's now under FAA review. Of course, we are all too aware that there are now two Pickton County measures on the November ballot. Both are Home Rule Charter amendments. 1C was referred by the Board of County Commissioners, and 200 is a citizens referendum. And finally, we also had some news develop over the summer. The United is now planning on replacing some of their CRJ-700s with Embraer E175s, and the inaugural flight is now planned for December 3rd. The other chart that I want to express upon you all is the breadth of our commercial air service. And this is a snapshot of all the winter routes we have. We've got American flying from five of their hubs, notably including Austin, Texas, which is not a hub for them. It's actually a focus city that they started growing significantly in the wake of the pandemic. It hasn't really done that well, Austin as a focus market for American. Aspen is going to be the only remaining ski destination that American is planning on operating out of their Austin hub for this winter. They've actually cut the service to Denver, Reno, Albuquerque, and even Vail have all been cut from their winter schedules. So, I continue to press upon Austin because that's a really important route for us. Now, we are the only ski resort where the folks from Austin can fly nonstop. United flies from their five hubs: Denver, Chicago, Houston, LA, and San Francisco. And interestingly, all but San Francisco and Chicago are now scheduled to operate year-round throughout the fall. So, that's both Houston and Los Angeles. And then, we've also got Delta flying both Atlanta and Los Angeles year-round, and then American flying from DFW year-round with actually twice daily service through the fall. So, interestingly, we actually have all three airlines flying from Los Angeles during the winter and the summer, and we have both American and United flying nonstop from Chicago. So, it's really good, healthy competition. That's one of the reasons we've seen relatively affordable fares coming in recently, and why we're seeing increased local usage. And then, I also want to point out our friends at Arrow. They're a small, scheduled, public charter operator that does run nonstop flights from Van Nuys in Southern California. And it's kind of a hybrid between a private jet and scheduled commercial service. You know, per the rules under which they operate, they're limited to flying a total of five flights a week. So, that's what they operate, actually nine segments per week to be exact. And so, that's why they choose to fly Van Nuys. And they've told me that the number-one source of their passengers are actually passengers who would typically charter their own planes. So, it's not an inexpensive option, but it's definitely starting to move the needle in terms of reducing the number of private jets. And the other point I'd like to make is, as we've seen improvement to our commercial flights, we've also seen a very slight reduction in the percentage of private or GA aircraft flying in and out of the Aspen Airport. Just most recently, for calendar year 2023, the percentage of flight total operations that were non-commercial was 76%, whereas as recently as a couple of years ago, it was up to as much as 83%. I think you've heard people quote that number quite a bit. So, that's a snapshot of where we are today in terms of our commercial flights.
Those percentages that you just quoted changed because the number of private flights went down, or the number of commercial flights went up, or both?
A little bit of both.
Right.
So, with that, you know, that's kind of the rosy picture I just painted of where we're at today. I'm going to pass it over to Dan to talk about some of the threats that are looming and the reality of the situation facing the future of the airport.
Okay, thanks, Bill. So, the runway is sort of the bane of my existence right now. You could say we're closely monitoring the runway. It has some subsurface issues that we discovered several years ago. It's not something that we can repair by just doing the three-inch millon overlay in targeted areas that we do every year. These are subsurface issues that are coming up from below the runway, that are pushing it up, causing heave. And then, that heave causes cracking and causes deterioration on pavement that we've put down even as little as 12 months prior to that. For that reason, the FAA has pulled their entitlement... Pulled our grant funding to continue to maintain that runway. Their standards require that pavement, if they make a repair, it should last a minimum of 10 years. We're finding it's lasting 12, 18, maybe 24 months in particular areas. Therefore, they're not willing to give us grant funding to make a repair that is lasting eight years shy, at least, of what it's supposed to. That's just not... That's not just not being a good steward of federal funds at that point. So, they're refusing to do that. And then, we also are not meeting design criteria, safety design criteria for that airport. Right now, we're too close, that runway and taxiway are too close together for design criteria. That needs to be separated an additional 80 feet. We have right now, it's called a modification to standard for the airport, which is a temporary waiver that many airports around the country will get until they reach a point similar to ours, where a redevelopment of some sort with a safety airfield infrastructure is on the books and needs to happen, and then they will bring that airport up to design standard. If somebody built a runway, let's say 10 years ago, and it was too close together, that runway may have more time, so that they could hold on to that modification standard for an additional period of time. Ours has reached the end of its useful life. So, if that runway is going to get redeveloped according to an updated airport layout plan, which the FAA is currently reviewing, and is also part of our current ALP and our current environmental assessment that we have out there, which is timed out, but it's still there, they're going to shift that runway, if they're going to pay for it, to the proper separation distance right now. If they pull that modification to standard, and again, modification standard is really just a waiver that basically tells the FAA that you are operating an airport safely as long as you put in certain constraints. FAA does not like constraints, and they're willing to have them temporarily, but not permanently, because that's discrimination, okay? You're keeping certain people out for no particular reason other than you just want to constrain them. If it's due to geometry of an airfield, and let's say physically, we could not separate that runway and taxiway out, then we may be able to keep that modification to standard indefinitely. But we have proven that we can separate the two out. It's a safety issue for the FAA. It's a design safety issue. Therefore, the next time we redevelop that runway, the two need to be separated out, okay? Again, it's a way that the FAA... It's a method the FAA uses to ensure safety at an airport that does not meet design standards, okay? So, once they pull that modification to standard, if we don't meet those separation requirements, they'll put in other things to make sure we meet those safety standards. The most likely one is the sterilization of our taxiway when any aircraft is using or about to use the runway. That'll move us from about 32 operations an hour, is what our standard max is in good weather, down to about eight, okay? Because the airport... Because the FAA will not prioritize private aircraft or general aviation aircraft over commercial aircraft, you can imagine what's going to happen to our commercial service if we move to eight operations an hour, four in, four out. Could be a problem.
Dan, can I ask you to repeat that again? I think that's one of the most critical things that I imagine you'll say all afternoon. So, can you repeat what the FAA might do and why, and what that result will be, please?
Sure. So, right now, they're saying if you can maintain a 95-foot wingspan restriction, okay, on your airport, they will have a modification to standard, which lets the FAA know that you are operating the aircrafts on the taxiway and on the runway. If neither one of those aircrafts wingspan exceed 95 feet, they know the airport's being operated safely. Now, if the FAA pulls that modification to standard, because we're not moving forward, and they know we can move forward with that full separation, they will come up with other ways to manage that safety, meaning they will go full group three, which means aircraft could potentially be up to 118 feet. But anytime an aircraft is operating on the runway, nobody is allowed to be on the taxiway with another aircraft, okay? They sterilize one. And that ensures that when the airport... When the runway is being operated on in one fashion or another, whether something's taxiing on it, or something's on approach, or on departure, that that taxiway is sterilized, so that there could not be an issue between an aircraft that's on a taxiway that's too close to a runway.
Does the FAA do that often?
Yep, they do. Both facilities I have worked at, Fort Lauderdale-Hollywood International Airport and Reno-Tahoe International Airport, both had modifications to standard for existing infrastructure in various areas, that if something was on a taxiway, and either an adjacent taxiway or an adjacent runway could not be used at the same time, they'd hold aircraft short, so that they could not be in an area that was in conflict, or they have some other, you know, if it was a road, that people could not be on that road while an aircraft was on a taxiway or the runway, yes. That's... It's a fairly common thing until you can get to a point, assuming you can get to a point, where you can make the design modifications to fix that.
Question. Has that sterilization taken place with a modification of standard in place without changes to the run... What I'm looking at is, has FAA had history of demoting a category three to a category two, or changing, when there's an existing modification of standard, to change it to sterilize?
So, typically, they, you know, they could downgrade the airfield to a group two, which means maximum wingspan of 79 feet or less. But they've already invested in infrastructure that got us beyond group two. We are technically a group three airport with a modification of standard to limit us to a 95-foot wingspan restriction. Chances of them downgrading us and giving up some of that infrastructure that they've already put in place to go to group two is unlikely. It's possible, but it's very unlikely. I have not ever seen that happen at an airport. Most likely is to do... Remove the modification and implement operational controls, such as the sterilization of the taxiway, to maintain safety.
Thank you.
You know, another way of saying that is, it sounds like the modification of standards is going away regardless of what happens or the outcome of the vote. So, the bigger planes will be allowed to operate here regardless of what happens. The consequence is, if we don't move the runway, it could be these operational restrictions that Dan just described.
And that gets interesting. Once you go into a removal of modification standard, and all of a sudden, you take away that safety margin, which was... What the hell the FAA looks at it, a couple of things could happen. An aircraft operator may say, you're not meeting... You don't have a modification of standard. We can't guarantee the airport's being operated safely. You don't have that in there. It still will operate safely through the sterilization. But let's say we downgraded to a group two, for instance. What happens to that $1.4 billion? How much United put into the E175s?
It's a billion.
Okay, over a billion-dollar investment, particularly to operate at the Aspen Airport, that United Airlines just invested in, and you just pulled the rug out from under them. What happens to the private jet operators that bought the Aspen-model Gulfstream that is 94 feet, 11-inch wingspan, and now can only operate in a 79-foot configuration or less? You just pulled the rug out from under them. They're going to sue. You can almost guarantee that at that point. And then, the FAA is going to get in line. What will happen is somebody will put in a Part 16 complaint, which mean it's a... It goes down a number of paths there. But once somebody puts in a Part 16 complaint, that means the FAA starts to investigate. They'll send you a letter of investigation, and if you don't make the changes that are necessary to operate that airport safely, in their eyes, they will also get in the lawsuit realm. So, it gets very interesting from that part forward, okay? We're not saying this will happen, but this is the likely path that we'll be going down.
Dan, let's talk about sort of the timeline on what we hope is going to happen, and what is in the plan, and then we can talk about some other issues that I think would be of interest to the council as well.
Sure. So, right now, you see ALP on the left side of the diagram there. We've sent... We've completed the ALP from our perspective. We sent it to the FAA for their review, and it goes through all their various lines of business: Flight Standard District Office, you know, goes through airspace, goes through the design criteria with the Airport District Office in Denver, and goes up to headquarters for an evaluation. That's the FAA review portion of this. We're expecting... We have... They've compiled the comments. We haven't seen them yet. We don't know what the comments are going to be. They'll come back to us, and we need to address those comments. Eventually, the FAA will approve that airport layout plan, and it'll come to the county board. And because both the FAA and the county sponsor is a sort of a contract between the two, they will both sign it, okay? Sometime in there, we'll start to go into airfield design. First, we'll have to go through an environmental review. The problem is, we had an environmental assessment that was done in 2018, received a finding of no significant impact. That timed out after five years, okay? 2023, it timed out. So, we need to go back through another environmental review. We hope it'll be a written reevaluation, although enough time it may have passed that we have to go through something a little more robust. Estimate six to eight months on that. We're hoping to get into airfield runway design somewhere in that window as well, so we can get moving with things. And then, we'd go into airfield construction if things worked out perfectly in 2026. We'd be looking at probably an eight-month shutdown, okay? Things could change, though. We could be asked to do it in sections, depending on funding, and some other things. But right now, we're just not... We're not sure on that one. What we also are chasing is the Part 17 infrastructure law funding, okay? That times out in 2026. You have to apply for that the late summer prior to the dispersment of that grant. So, about a little... About a month ago this time next year, we will have to apply for the terminal funding grant, okay? That is $1 billion a year for five years. 2026 is the last year. Last year to apply for it is next summer, okay? We will lose out on that potential funding, you know, once-in-a-generational funding opportunity.
Question on that. If the ALP that's been submitted is not accepted, is it so possible to get terminal grant money?
No. So, what has happened there, and the FAA has been fairly clear to us on this one, is they're not going to give us... Our priority is safety here. The FAA's priority is safety. They are telling us that the first grant, or the next grant they'll write us at this point, is to shift that runway. Everything else is subservient to that at this point, including the terminal. So, they're going to hold up any of that funding until we agree to move forward with the runway. The problem is, is we've already been down this road before, so to speak. We have a current ALP that was signed by the FAA and the county that says shift the runway. We went through an environmental program for both the terminal and the runway shift. And then, once that was done, we sort of pulled the rug out on that one. So, the FAA this time is going to want to see us get us further than that point. So, they're probably going to want to see shovels in the ground before they're willing to commit to a terminal.
Shovels in the ground for runway?
Runway, yep, exactly.
I have a question. A private pilot... A private pilot expressed concern to me about shifting the runway eighty feet to the west on the approach. I mean, that approach is already close to the Drosey property, the Sky Mountain Park area.
Sure.
What are the safety concerns for shifting the runway eighty feet?
No significant safety concerns, the FAA has already looked at this and said that safety is not an issue. Again, safety is the fundamental priority FAA. Safety and accessibility are both the fundamental priorities. They've already looked at it, said eighty feet, that's just, you know, it's not even the width of our current runway that it would shift. So, it's, it's minimal, it doesn't become a safety issue with the shale bluffs and et cetera.
I might add that I've asked the same question of a, a technical consultant who's built some of the approaches to flying in and out of the Aspen Airport, and one of the explanations he offered me is anything less than a hundred feet of, of distance is considered inconsequential when, consequential when it comes to aviation spacing, because even the tick marks on, on all the instruments in the flight deck are done in one-hundred-foot increments. So, anything less than a hundred feet is really considered in, inconsequential. And more importantly, the improvement in safety by having a nice buffer between the distance of the taxiway to the runway far, is a far greater safety enhancement rather than moving the centerline eighty feet further to the west.
I mean, I think that's downplaying it a little bit, and I understand that's, that's, that's okay, but I think that's, you know, we all know that this airport is, is already, you know, a challenge for many pilots and many aircraft. And, and, you know, like many airports, we've had losses at this airport, so I, I, I don't think de-minimizing the safety out here is, 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 is really healthy. Eighty feet, a hundred feet, no matter what, there's mountains that are right there, and any closer is closer. So, I, I just, I, I just, you know, I appreciate that.
Way, way more importantly is that the taxiway is too close to the runway right now. That's what the FAA is insisting on.
There's definitely more of a safety issue.
So, along that, along that same line, if I can, please. Could the, could the runway be moved away from the taxiway, less distance so that the ninety-five-foot wingspan was the, the standard in place for the separation appropriately?
Sure, if we did not.
Why does it have to move eighty feet, and why does it have to allow a next, a next classification of, of wingspan?
Because that is the determined safety criteria for runway design, airport, airport design, for a particular classification of aircraft. That's why. Anything less is going to implement another modification of standard, which the FAA is adamant about. If you have space to correct that modification of standard, we need to correct that modification of standard. And from a safety standpoint, another thing that will take place with the runway shift is a widening of that runway from a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet. It's always better to have a wider runway. Wider runway is like a wider road. I would rather drive on a wider road than a, than a thinner road. You know, and, and one, one other thing real quick, you know, we have, yeah, sure, we have, you know, every, any airport could be a potential safety issue, but it's not the distance to the shale bluffs, it's the safety distance. It's other things, you know, such as the steep approach, and other things that aren't going to change regardless of whether we shift that runway or not.
You know, the one other thing I was going to add to your question, Tori, John Bauer actually addressed that multiple times during the video recording that exists when he had a public meeting with VOCC almost seventeen months ago, and he actually was specific saying that John Peacock has asked me that question every single time that we've met, and my answer has been the same, and it's going to be the same every time it comes up from here forward.
Bill, and John Bauer is?
John, go ahead. John Bauer is the manager of the Airport District Office for the FAA in Denver. And, you know, really, we have not seen anything empirical that says that the shift of runway eighty feet is a safety issue.
So, I have a question, overall question about, it seems to be accepted regardless of what layout plan you want and what side of these ballot issues you're on, that the runway needs to be replaced.
Yes.
And it seems to be also universally accepted that the terminal needs to be replaced.
Yes.
And so, the question, and the question is, is the separation included in both layout plans that are being advocated by both the Board of County Commissioners and other entities?
Actually, there's only one configuration of the airport layout plan, and that's the shift of the runway eighty feet to the west.
That the FAA will accept.
Yeah, anything else is kind of muted at that point.
And if the FAA does not accept it, then it's local funding and local payback of all outstanding bonds the FAA has extended?
Not necessarily, it could, it's, it could happen, absolutely. That's a tool they have in their jet, in their tool chest. They could request past funding back. But, again, we go back to the, we go down that road of, even if, let's say, the airport could potentially afford, which we couldn't, to replace that runway in place, in kind, where it is right now, they would still pull the modification of standard, and the FAA controls air traffic, which means they would sterilize that taxiway if any aircraft is going to utilize that runway. So, that's the problem. Even if we could do it, the ramifications of doing so are quite dire.
John?
One quick question, how wide is the wingspan on the Embraer 175?
Ninety-four feet eleven?
Eighty-three feet eleven inches.
Ninety-three.
And that's a relatively new aircraft?
Yes, they're still building them today. The E-175, in fact, I'm going to skip ahead to that slides on this little presentation here, because this is the question that's just come up. That plane was announced last November that SkyWest is going to be ordering nineteen new Embraer E-175s to replace an existing fleet of nineteen CRJ-700s as they come off contract flying for United over the next three years. It's no small coincidence that those nineteen are the nineteen that they use to continue to fly in and out of Aspen. So, the first of these aircraft is now scheduled to be introduced into the Aspen Airport starting on December third of this year, and the majority of the Denver-Aspen flights will be operated with the E-175 initially, along with one Houston flight at the beginning, and I think an LA flight starting on the nineteenth of December. The, the wingspan of the E-175 is just inside our current restriction, and it's powered essentially by the same engines that power the CRJ-700, so it's not new technology, it's got about the same level of noise. The big difference is that the engines on the E-175 are mounted beneath the wings as opposed to on the tail. So, it does have some slightly different acoustics. I was told this by the airport director in Sun Valley, Idaho, which had their CRJ-700s replaced with E-175s back in twenty-seventeen. And they've seen a marvelous improvement in reliability ever since that happened, because the big benefit of the E-175 is it's got modern avionics onboard, and it'll be able to take advantage of satellite-based navigation, which is not available on the older CRJ-700s. More recently, the E-175 was introduced into the Eagle County Airport back in twenty-nineteen, and just a year and a half ago, it was introduced into the Gunnison Airport, replacing the last of their CRJ-700s, and Gunnison has seen a remarkable improvement in their reliability as well. So, this is a, a, a good thing for the community and for the continuation of our, our commercial air service. I think the passengers are going to see a substantial upgrade. You'll be able to bring in full-size carry-on bags and place them in overhead bins rather than gate-check them. These are going to be new airplanes, so it's going to have that fresh, new airplane feel and smell to them. It's going to be a substantially upgraded product that will bring us well into the future, and it's probably going to take the next three years or so before they transition the rest of the CRJ-700s out and replace them with Embraer E-175s. That's just for United. American and Delta are watching with great interest to see how this works out. Very likely, I would expect, that they will see what kind of operational improvements are realized by, by United, and we'll, we'll see the market forces do their, do their work, is my expectation.
So, my next question, I'm going to just ask for the general public, if, if these new airplanes are currently under our wingspan guidelines, why are we going for the wider separation of runway if this plane's going to fit?
Well, that's because the FAA is looking twenty to thirty years out. If they're going to make a hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar-plus investment in a runway or an airfield, they're not looking at next week, tomorrow, even ten years down the road. They're looking twenty, thirty years down the road, because that's how long a runway could potentially last. So, what they're saying is, and it's not, it's not nearly impossible to retrofit a runway to meet the design standards once you, if you build it in the same place that it is. So, they're looking at potential future aircraft, and they want to make sure that whether they happen or not, okay, that they're ready for that, and they don't want to make a hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar-plus investment in something, if it does happen, then what do they do? Because then it becomes an artificial access restriction. Okay? That's why they're doing it. You can't move lights if you're going to widen the runway. You just, it's not easy thing to do, you're almost starting over. You definitely can't shift the runway after you already built it in place in ten years. And it's not saying that a specific aircraft is going to come in here. I mean, we, our design aircraft is Airbus A220-300 series. It doesn't mean that aircraft is going to come in here. It means we need to design around an aircraft with similar characteristics, weight, wingspan, approach speeds, all that. And that's all they're doing. We're building a facility that could potentially meet our twenty-to-thirty-year need. That's all they're doing, and they're making a significant investment in it.
And if I might just add, as a direct answer to your question, you know, why build it? For some reason, the, the community dialogue has turned to the, the reason to do this is to allow bigger planes, and that is simply not true. You certainly haven't heard it from either myself or from Dan today. It's all about safety, and that's what the FAA wants. Yes, there is a consequence that it could bring in some larger aircraft, and I've done an awful lot of studying on the aircraft that I think are likely to come in here, and I can virtually assure you, it's not going to be any version of the Boeing 737. You know, that was a subject of intense debate almost thirty, twenty-nine years ago, to be exact, in nineteen-ninety-five. And, and the type of 737s that were debated back then are now long gone from commercial service. The 737 was built almost sixty years ago, and it spans four generations with thirteen different aircraft type. Of those, there are only two that are still in current commercial operations that would even fit within the revised wingspan restrictions here of a hundred-and-eighteen feet and potentially be able to operate, and of those, there's not a single North American carrier that would have any interest in flying them into the Aspen Airport. United is one of those operators, and their, those planes are already twenty-five years old on average. Obviously, they're invested in the Embraer E-175. The most likely aircraft, larger aircraft that, that could potentially come into the airport with a hundred-and-eighteen-foot wingspan is the one that Dan mentioned as a design aircraft, the Airbus A220, and specifically, the, the smaller, lighter A220-100, which is currently in service by Delta, and they fly quite a few of them out of Salt Lake City. I've been on them numerous times myself, it's a marvelous aircraft, and it is the quietest commercial airliner flying in the United States today. I might also add that when Delta introduced that aircraft to replace some older-generation jets at John Wayne Airport in Southern California, the, the mayor of the town of Newport Beach that sits right on the flight path, the departure path, wrote a letter of thanks to Delta Airlines for upgrading their service with such a sophisticated new aircraft that's so much quieter, it is so much higher on departure because it can climb so steeply. It, it, the, the noise reduction that they've seen was cause to celebrate, were the exact words that the mayor chose.
And just for a point of clarification, implements on the CRJ-700 and Embraer 175, exactly the same number of passengers?
Correct. The, the, the capacity of those aircraft, at least the version that United plans to have operated by SkyWest, are both configured for seventy seats. So, is, is an aircraft for aircraft replacement of CRJ-70 passenger CRJ-700s for seventy-passenger E-175s. The more standard configuration of the E-175 is seventy-six seats, so in this configuration, they're actually going to have a few more rows of premium seats. They'll have twice as many first-class seats, and like I said, it's going to be a substantial upgrade to the, the, the product from the passenger's perspective, but in terms of the number of seats, it's exactly the same.
Bill? Firstly, thanks to both of you for taking your time to, to come here. I appreciate it, and, and while this, while the airport's obviously not an asset of the cities, it impacts all of us, and, and I think we all have strong feelings about it. There are a number of people in the community that are calling this project an expansion of the airport. Could you talk to that, the accuracy or inaccuracy of that term, please?
Sure, it's, I'm not sure how it is an expansion. I'm not even sure how to address that. It's really just a, bringing the airport up to its safety design standard, that's all it is. We're not lengthening a runway so you can bring in, you know, we're not doing anything like an expansion. We even maintain a certain level of traffic through the airport because we only have so many gates at a terminal, and even our future terminal is expected to, I think, have seven gates, and they're swing gates. So, I'm not sure, I can't quite get my mind around the expansion item.
I, I would say the only thing in the proposed airport layout plan as currently laid out that could be referenced as an expansion is the runway because it'll be expanded from a hundred feet wide to a hundred-and-fifty feet wide, by definition, but that's the only expansion proposed in the airport layout plan. And of course, longer term, the, the piece that's not controversial is a new terminal building, which will be an expanded terminal building if the, if and when that ever happens.
It will be, although I don't think it's going to predicate additional folks coming through or implements through that. We're just vastly undersized, so with the new terminal, we will have places to put people's bags, we won't have TSA lines out the door, things like that.
Bill, by, by, when you asked that question, by expansion, did you mean building it bigger?
I, I, there are a lot, I didn't mean anything.
Well, you did, you, you asked a question about expansion. The terminal will be bigger, the runway will be bigger. If that's, yes, there's expansion. Yes, there's expansion. There, there will be great, there will be opportunity for more flights, there's, there, there will be opportunity for more passengers. Will it happen? Does it materialize? We don't know. But to say that there won't be expansion, I'm sorry, but, I mean, yeah, the thing, yes, it's going to be built bigger.
I, I didn't specify a conclusion, I just asked it. People are calling it an expansion.
Wait, there's opportunity for more flights today, if they wanted to, is not economically viable for the airlines. We have empty seats in the planes that are coming in now commercially.
The runway will be bigger, that, one, another word for building things bigger is expanding them. The terminal will be bigger.
I, I understand what you're saying, but there's no nexus between additional passengers and what we're doing with the airport, none whatsoever.
Please, yep. Sam, did you have a question or an add-on to that?
Oh, just, yeah, just, new destinations potentially with the?
Yeah, even if there is, though, I mean, right now, we have passengers coming in from New York, we have passengers coming in from Miami, they just check, they just cut through an airport. I know when I'm making plans to travel, whether it's business or pleasure, I don't make or break my travel plans because I need to transfer through Denver or Chicago. So, I don't see how a direct flight versus a connector flight is going to make a difference in some of these travel plans, for one. Number two, it's more environmentally conscious to have direct flights. It's always better to have a direct flight than to have a connecting flight from an environmental standpoint.
Very good, and the two ballot questions, I don't know if you can talk about them, but one C is the one that approves the plan and it supersedes the other one, correct? Like, if that passes and the other one passes, it, it wins out?
I believe so. Yep.
Question on the FBO, and Atlantic Aviation was extended a new contract from VOCC, but I don't think that moots the, the point that has been brought up by some people that the county should take over that operation, that, as I understand it, there's a, a bailout clause in that contract that if the vote goes against the ALP, that they can back out of the contract. Is that true?
There is something to that effect in, in the, the draft FBO lease as it currently sits, which would make sense. I don't know if, you know, the, with, whether they would bail, but it would definitely impact the minimum annual guarantee and the revenue that they would give to the county at that point. Absolutely, because, you know, if, let's say the airfield, as I mentioned, let's say they sterilize the taxiway. That decreases the number of operations that the FBO would be able to service at that point, lowering their revenue, therefore, the revenue to the county would significantly decrease. So, they would have to reevaluate that minimum annual guarantee at that point, sure.
I have a couple of other questions. And, and to start, I should, I apologize, but I should already know this, but Dan, you work for the airport and Picking County?
Correct.
Bill, you work for, who is your employer?
That's a great question. I'm a consultant now to a group called Fly Aspen Snowmass, which is a consortium between the Aspen-Picking County Airport, Aspen Skiing Company, the Aspen Chamber Resort Association, and Town of Snowmass Village.
But not City of Aspen?
City of Aspen is a party to, through the destination marketing funds through the ACRA. So, that's how the City of Aspen is involved in that as well.
And you consult on airline service and?
Schedules, capacity, and, and behind the scenes on safety.
And, and the primary focus of your position is to ensure air service and to create air service and, and make sure that, that markets are being met and that... create air service and, and make sure that, that markets are being met and that, that people can get here.
Yep. It used to be described as the, the field of air service development. I would say in the case of this community, it's more like air service maintenance.
Well, so, you know, I don't think it's a big secret, but I'm, I'm, I'm got a lot of concerns around this airport and the expansion of it. And yes, I do see this as expansion of, of the airport. I know, I'm just, but you, you said it, so I'm, I'm just reflecting it back. Yeah, I do see this as expansion. It's strange to me that the FAA seems to be so, uh, uh, demanding and, and putting us in a position of accepting what most of us say that we, we, we're not looking for and want, which is growth or the growth, the, the impacts that come with growth. So i- i- it's, it's a little disheartening that this conversation forgets a little bit about the location of this airport. And I, I don't see this as a step forward for environmental causes. I know that there's a, a hope for a, a change in aircraft in the, in the future that will, but, but I don't think that the offset of even changing over to A two twenties in certain instances are going to actually negate the other impacts that there will be, you know? I, I wish that there was a possibility for us to move the runway and, as I've shared with you, just let in the planes that do meet those new thresholds. If the A two twenty is 30% quieter than the aircrafts, the E one seven five, if it's 20, 30% more fuel efficient, like, let's let those in. That's great. And, and I think that that would be a real statement about being environmental with our airport. But I do, I see that this, the existing routes that are out there are probably going to be maintained. This will offer the opportunity to create a couple of new routes perhaps. Nonstop service to the East Coast has been something that's been talked about. On the private side, there is going to be, you know, some, some, I would see as more capacity for having more, uh, private planes coming into the airport. All of that, just to say that, you know, that drives the other impacts of workforce and the workforce shortages that we see. And that's at the airport as well. And the housing impacts that come along with some of that. And then, of course, you know, when you're bringing employees in from, from farther away, you just have trans, transit issues that we already have now. So interesting, uh, we have a, a survey conversation coming up. And, and there's a couple of items in there that'll tie back to this. But, you know, I do see that there are some, some impacts that this valley and this community need to, need to understand are coming their way. Some people welcome those. Some people want those impacts. And, and, and I understand that, but for me, it's, it, it's a little different for the, the values that I place in, here in Aspen. Anyway, I am happy that this is, there's a couple ballot questions so the public can, at least the voting public can be heard on this. And we'll see who that is. But did you have more presentation on?
No, I think we pretty much skipped through all the high points that are really relevant to you unless you want to talk more, anymore about the bigger planes.
Oh, just two quick things as far as the FAA forcing us into a position. I don't, I don't see the FAA forcing us into a position. They're saying, here are two options. You can either move forward with a full Design Group Three airport and meet safety design standards, or you can keep what you have, build it, rebuild it yourself, but you're going to live with the sterilization issues or some other access impact issues that could have some ancillary effects. They're giving you a choice. They're just saying choose one. That's all they're doing.
You ever seen that cartoon where, where the guy has the big mallet behind his back?
No, I'm not saying they're, I'm not saying they're great choices. I'm just saying they have choices.
There's not much of a choice in there.
There may not be.
But again, you don't, I don't know the FAA to be like that. I've never heard the FAA operating in this manner anywhere. And I've actually reached out to a couple other mayors in some different cities that have had recent dealings with them. And they did not have the same experience with the FAA either. So it's just, it's a surprise to me that, 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 that's the, that's the, that's the choice that's ahead of us. That's interesting.
I would, I would say it, it's up to whether those particular mayors had airports under their periphery that had safety design issues at that point. And another, just real quick, as far as bringing in more private jets, we're not seeing where that, I'm not seeing any empirical evidence where that would be the case either. Anybody that has the means to come in here in a private jet is finding a way to come in on a private jet. And many want, many individuals that have jets, that private jets that are too large to come in here right now will fly from, let's say, just an example, New York to Centennial Airport or New York to Rifle Airport, change aircraft, if you can believe it, and fly into an air, fly into Aspen in an aircraft that fits with our wingspan restriction. So it's not limiting the number of aircraft, of people that come in here. I can't imagine somebody with those types of means is saying, my particular jet doesn't fit in here. I'm not coming there. They're going to find a different way to do it.
That's highly speculative. And I've actually had conversations with some folks that have some of those jets that, that have made that nod that they would be happy to fly in here with them. But I, I mean, we could go on even about the capacity at the airport and what's going to be able to be landing here versus the turnaround takeoffs that we see, et cetera. John, and then Ward.
I read a really interesting article in the New York Times, I'm going to say in the last 18 months, specifically about the new, I think it was about the new Gulfstream seven hundred. And it talked about how currently there were certain airports in the world where you couldn't fly one and two. And so people would fly their bigger jets into a regional airport and some other, well, their smaller jet here. With the G seven hundred, you don't have to have two jets anymore. You can just have the one. And the new Gulfstream is 103 feet. So I think there will be more Gulfstream seven hundred traffic.
Oh, absolutely. There will be more Gulfstream seven hundred traffic perhaps, or Gulfstream six fifty traffic.
And they'll replace older, noisier jets.
Noisier jets. So you're not seeing an influx of operations. You're seeing a change in operations.
And I'd add that all the newer aircraft, that the reason the Gulfstream is, and Bombardier are marketing these newer aircraft as ultra long range is because they're so much more fuel efficient. With the new wing designs, they slice through the air quicker, cutting down on both the noise and the power and the energy that's required to propel an aircraft over a certain distance. And that's why some of these, the Gulfstream G seven hundred can fly almost halfway around the world.
I rode up the gauntlet last winter with a lady who was telling me how lucky she was that she could take a direct flight from her home in the Bahamas to, I think, Dallas, and then take a direct flight from Dallas to Aspen. And now she can do it in one plane. I just want to say this about, about the airport talk. I, I see parallels between this airport issue and our own entrance to Aspen. I think the threat of losing government funding if we don't do things in a certain, sometimes it seems predetermined way, we will lose that funding. And these decisions just seem at odds with our community values.
No, that's, that's completely understood. Absolutely.
Ward?
Yeah, Tori, I'm interested in what your, you talked to some mayors of other communities and what, and their relationship and experiences with the FAA. Could you share with us what that?
Yeah, there were conversations around airport rebuild and airport capacities. And the, the sentiment was shared that it was a amicable collaborative relationship, that the community values and community desires were, were held at, at the front of, of what the FAA was seeking to do in those communities.
And it's your opinion that that's not the way that the FAA is communicating with Picking County?
Not really, yeah. You know, I mean, what, what I've heard from our county commissioners, what I've heard from leaders of Ski Co., what I've heard from so many is that, you know, we're, we're trying to make a plan without the growth impacts and that if we had our druthers, we, we would not be allowing larger planes. But we are being told that you have two options. You either get shut down in a sense or sterilized, if you want to call it that, or you accept the next generation of wingspan up to, I don't know, what, what, 115 will be the next?
118 feet.
118 feet. And so, you know, the conversations that I have locally are that our community desires are one thing, but we're, we're, we're not, we're being given very limited resource to achieve those community goals. And that's not, that's not what I've been shared with.
Just for clarification, your definition of growth impacts are increased employments?
No. The impacts are what comes with, I mean, heck, you could even say a, a new terminal that's going to be built and the airline service that, yes, I think we are going to see more planes through our airport. Well, that alone requires more employees. So there's going to be employee generation out of the airport itself. So that, that's just the start of it. But you, you're going to see other impacts. For example, greater accessibility to a place that's already so desirable. In Aspen, you're going to see a continued escalation of home prices and, and scarcity of local housing for, as a resource, free market housing as a, as a locals resource. You're going to see that pressure moving down valley. You're going to see greater demand for services. You know, and we were going to get, we're going to get to this in the Aspen Community Survey. But you know what you're going to see is you're going to see more erosion of the locally serving community based businesses that we've seen over the last 10 years, and that's going to continue. You're going to see greater pressure on different lands that are now currently designated as agricultural, open space and the like for development, down valley pressures. They're building hotels mid-valley right now. You're going to see more of that. So it's, I think it all just generates a, and, and I'm not saying it's all because of the airport. I'm just saying the airport is another step in a direction that, that we are going.
Yeah, I don't agree with all of those, particularly the employments. Without increase in employments, I don't think there's a, a pressure for more growth.
The number that I saw just today was that there's a 14% growth year over year on passenger traffic at the airport. 14% this year over last year. Do, do I see that going down? I don't. So i- i- if employments are the growth that we're going to see, then yes, we're going to see, we're going to see more passengers. You know, um, yeah, it's all that, it's all that. There's, there's a lot of growth impacts. Yeah. You know, speaking of that, does the airport or the airlines, do they, do they have housing? Is there, is there a housing program at the airport?
We do have, the county owned, or county via the airport owns five units, I believe. We have five units on prop, three units on property behind our airport operations center. We have three one bedroom apartments in there. And then I believe we have two down valley units, and those are specifically for airport, county airport employees. And we're always on the lookout for additional housing should it come about.
And how much housing is planned in the new, in the new A L P? How much additional housing is planned?
No additional housing. The FAA is no longer willing to allow. Housing is considered a nonconforming use to an airport. So to put actual housing on an airport would be something they wouldn't be willing to do anymore.
Yeah. Well, that's a shame in some ways.
True, true.
John?
And how many people does the airport employ total?
Uh, boy, from all the, are you talking with all the airlines and everything else? Or are you talking just the?
Just the county operation.
Just the county. We have about 55 employees out there.
Thank you.
Sam, any questions, comments? Bill?
Nope, thanks.
Guys?
Nope, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming down. Appreciate it.
There's one closing comment I'd like to just stress. You know, this is all about safety. And I, I want to make sure that I'm on the record as being a huge proponent of safety. It's something that I work very, very hard on behind the scenes. And the airlines are extremely committed to a safe, reliable operation at the Aspen Airport. And, and that's one of the reasons they're making such incredible investments, you know, towards improving our air service here, is it's all about safety. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, next item on our agenda tonight is the 2024 Aspen Community Survey.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is John Barker. I'm the interim director of the Strategy and Innovation Office. And with me, I have our consultant, Joseph Deolio from Polco. So one thing to know about our 2024 Community Survey before we kick things over to Joe is we have changed our survey vendor from 2022 to 2024. This is exciting. It allows us to benchmark ourselves against communities both nationally and within Colorado, and helps us better align with community survey best practices. Want to stress from the start, the overall tenor of this, of the 2024 survey is, is positive. There are obviously a few things which we'll go through today that are areas of focus for us to, to look to in the future. But this is a positive sentiment overall. And with that, I'll hand it over to Joe. Feel free to stop us and ask questions throughout. Joe will take us through most of the presentation, and then I'll wrap things up with some next steps from the city's perspective.
Wonderful. Thank you, John. Thank you. Good evening to the mayor and members of the council. Again, my name is Joe Deolio. I'm a Senior Survey Associate at Polco National Research Center. It is an absolute pleasure to be here in person to cover your survey results, and especially from our headquarters in Madison, Wisconsin. I'd say the, the best part of my job is being able to come and see the communities that we work with and have these interactions. Sometimes especially, it can be humbling. I would say that the definition of a ski hill is very different in the Midwest than it is here in Aspen. So thank you so much for inviting me into your wonderful community. And before getting started, I do want to thank a couple of folks, especially those on the city side of things, especially to John for being the main point of contact. Throughout this iteration of the National Community Survey was instrumental throughout the design process as well as administration. So thank you for all the hard work on this important project. And a little bit about us, Polco's online community engagement polling platform provides information tools that local government and other public sector leaders need, helping connect them with the, the residents within their community. And then the N R C, the National Research Center, has been the premier provider of survey services for the past, usually I say 25 years, but it's been since 1994, so I can officially say for the past 30 years. We also do have longstanding partnerships with a number of organizations, including ICMA, National League of Cities. And we do work closely with a number of universities, including UW-Madison, Stanford, as well as Harvard Kennedy School of Government. And before diving into results, I want to emphasize that there are a variety of ways that these results can be used. Most commonly, the jurisdictions that we work with use their survey data to monitor trends in resident opinion over time and measure government performance and ratings of public trust, and to inform both budgeting processes as well as strategic planning. Our hope really is that we take these findings as presented, and it'll spur ideas that we can dig in a little bit deeper and get us thinking into ways that we can utilize these results into our planning processes. And the National Community Survey, or the N C S as I'll most commonly refer to it as, is a standardized five-page comprehensive survey, allowing municipalities to assess resident opinion about their community and local government. The N C S focuses on the livability of Aspen by categorizing survey questions into these 10 main facets of community livability. And these are the areas of life identified through extensive survey research as those being most vital to create communities that folks want to live in. I do want to note as well that there are items within each of these 10 facets that the city has direct control over, and then also items that the city doesn't have direct control over. We do this by design to give us a good overarching view into the quality of life for residents within Aspen. So just something that I wanted to stress and note. So if there's anything that we see popping out that we know that the city doesn't have direct control over, that's just good to keep, keep in mind that, that helps us to, again, get that good overarching view of the quality of life for folks in Aspen. Finally, we do also find that these facets tend to align with the municipal departments well, making it easy for city staff to quickly find the information that's most pertinent to them and their department. Now, moving into the methodology that we utilize for this iteration of the N C S. I know that the city has done a number of community surveys in the past, but this is the first time that we've administered the National Community Survey. It was opened between June 12th, July 29th of earlier this year. And we employed a mailing approach. And we employed a mailing approach, so we had a random probability-based sample. And we also did have a version of the survey that was open to the public. For that probability-based sample, all addresses within the city of Aspen had the same probability of being chosen and a known probability of chosen. And we have a proprietary process to pull those addresses randomly. That starts with getting all of the addresses from the United States Postal Service with updated listings. From there, utilizing the GIS boundary files provided to us by the city, we can actually determine where exactly those addresses are, and ensuring that we're looking only at those within the defined boundaries of Aspen. So those that aren't within those defined boundaries wouldn't be considered. And then from there, we use that proprietary process to pull out 35, 3,500 households to receive the survey. Those households received multiple points of contact, the first of which being a postcard, letting them know that the survey had opened, giving them some background information and inviting them to respond online. And this was followed up by an additional reminder survey sent out a week later with similar information, and again, the ability to respond online. All mailings did include passages in both English and Spanish, so folks could respond in either language with instructions on how to respond in their preferred language. Now, along with that probability-based random sample, we did also run a non-probability open participation survey. And this was just opened up to ensure that anybody that wanted to respond to the survey had the ability to do so, whether they were randomly selected or not. And the results and the information that we're going to look at this evening is a combination of both of that random sample as well as those that responded to the open participation survey. Looking at just the total number of responses that we received, combining this data was just best practices and allows us to get the best data, statistically speaking, back possible. So that said, we received, ooh, was there a question?
Do you recall how many households were identified within the city of Aspen?
That's a great question. Off the top of my head, I don't remember exactly those, how many that fell out through the GIS process, but certainly something to be happy to follow up on.
I'd love to know how many households were identified in the city of Aspen? And then that would let me know what percentage of that 3,500 is. Thanks.
Certainly. We'll take a note, and definitely we'll follow up with that, thank you.
And Joe, how does Aspen's participation rate compare to, on a, on a percentage basis, compared to other communities?
Yeah, that's a great question. And all transparency, it was a little bit lower than we tend to see. Generally, we see within, just for the random sample responses, between a 12% to 18% response rate. I think we were closer to that 8 and 10 range of purely speaking from the random sample responses.
And to be clear, th- these households that were targeted are not necessarily City of Aspen voters, right? It's just someone with a Aspen address?
Correct, yes.
The City of Aspen.
City of Aspen address, yes.
Thanks.
But it, it's not people, it's just an address?
Just addresses, households within the city of Aspen, yes.
Okay.
One question. The online surveys, is that roughly 41% of the respondents were on the online? If there are 184 respondents that were from the online and 449 in total responses, is that 41% consistent with what you see throughout the country?
Yes, a great question. And just a quick point of distinction, I think you mean the, the open participation survey for that? All responses were captured via online, so just want to make sure that we have that distinction made. Yes, I believe that's correct, that around that 40% were from the open participation survey. Generally, that does vary from community to community, from the proportion of folks that respond via open participation. Generally speaking, I would say it is, you know, closer to that 20, 25%, but there are a number of communities that we work with that end up having more responses to the open participation survey than they do to the random sample. There's some communities that we work with where we tend to see around that 400, 350 responses to the random sample, and we've garnered closer to 1,000 responses to the open participation.
So we only got 255 responses out of the 3,500 randomly selected households?
That's correct, right in that range, yes.
Yes, and I would, I would still note it's a 95% confidence interval with the plus or minus 5% margin of error. So it remains statistically valid.
I'll also add, this response rate was exactly the same as 2022, 78%. My belief is our lower response rate is driven by the number of vacant households we have within the city.
That would make sense.
Wonderful, great questions. Would there be, you know, our hope would be that in two years, we're doing this again, right?
Correct.
With Polco? So maybe there's a discussion to be had there. Obviously, you have a lot of questions about how we're getting responses and where, how healthy that is or not. So maybe there's another method for mailing to, I don't know, residents?
So I, I do want to stress that while the response rate seems low, the statistical confidence interval in the results you're seeing here today are precisely the same as if nearly double the number of people would have participated.
Understood. Well, and I, and I don't, I wouldn't want to just get residents. I wouldn't, you know, I would like non-residents who have a household here to be on, so. Will you use this other microphone when you get a, yeah, use that one. It works. If that pops. Without popping. Anyway, enough said about that, but maybe there is a different, may, maybe there is something that we want to do to increase response.
Definitely, certainly, definitely something we can, I'll make a note of, and as that comes around, we can certainly have those discussions. Wonderful. And then just one other note from the previous slide is that we do also statistically reweight our responses. So in any survey project or in any study, there's bound to be some type of bias. And we're able to get around some of that bias from the sampling on the front end. But one of the ones that we tend to see the most is what we refer to as non-response bias. Unfortunately, we can't get everybody to respond that we want to. So one of the ways that we can help combat that from a statistical standpoint is that we look at the demographic makeup of Aspen according to the census, as well as the most recent American Community Survey. And we can consider some responses more than others to make sure that we're getting a good representative look into those demographic groups that make up Aspen as a whole with our survey results. Perfect. Ooh, I might just hop back, sorry, John. And that brings us to the benchmarking database. One of the advantages that local government have in participating in our surveys is the opportunity to compare, compare the ratings given by Aspen residents to those in other communities across the country. Really, this was born out of the observation that there are just some areas that tend to score higher than others. We'll say fire services. We know that fire services tend to score very well in most communities that we work with, compared to, let's say, anecdotally speaking, street-related services. Instead of pitting fire and street against each other, we can get those like comparisons, looking at fire services in Aspen and comparing those to communities across the nation, as well as those in street-related services, so we can get a good representative look and even comparison across the board. Next, we'll move into an overview of survey results. And we do ask two questions directly related to those 10 facets of community livability. And we can see the way that we reported that in this chart. We have that percent positive on the right. The first question, we ask folks to rate the overall quality of these 10 facets of community livability. And then that color coding is compared to those national benchmarks. We did also do a subset, a custom benchmark comparison for all communities within Colorado that we work with, that we'll see on later graphs, but just these national comparisons to start out with. So these are those ratings given to the overall quality of these 10 facets of community livability. And then we do also ask a second question, asking folks to then rate the overall importance of these 10 facets of community livability.
And just a quick note before we move on, you can see here Aspen ranked as higher than our national benchmarks in eight of the 10, and then similar to benchmarks in economic health and connection and engagement.
Wonderful. And then we see these importance ratings compared to those quality ratings. And then together, we can take this data and, I think, is the aptly-named balancing quality and importance matrix. This is just one of the tools that we have to help identify, relatively speaking, if there are any discrepancies between the quality of these 10 facets of community livability compared to the importance that folks place on them. So that just shows these, again, relatively speaking disparities in this chart. And again, just one of the many ways to help us identify any potential key findings as we look through the data. Now, getting a bit more technical into those benchmark comparisons, there's 123 separate individual survey items that are compared to those national benchmarks. To be considered higher than the national benchmarks, an individual item would have to exceed 10 points above the national average. To be considered below would be, again, exceed below that 10-point threshold. And anything within that 10-point above or below would be considered similar. We do tend to see the communities that we work with tend to fall largely into that similar category. And that's mostly because we work with, you know, other high-performing communities. I wish that we had every city and town across the country in our database. Unfortunately, we're just not quite there yet. We're working on it. But as we go through and consider these comparisons, it's good to keep in mind that these are other communities that want to hear from their residents, are engaged, and therefore, other high-performing communities. So with that said, we did see a good number of these items were similar, 52. And actually, a very, a good number, a large number, 52 are actually higher than the national benchmark ratings. This is what we, more than what we tend to see in this slide. And then 19 were lower than those national comparisons. And as briefly mentioned before, along with those national comparisons, we did also do a custom group of benchmarks for Aspen. These are compared to all of the other communities within Colorado that we work with. So with that in mind, we did see a similar number, similar distribution with 54 similar, slightly more, 56 were higher than other communities in Colorado, and slightly fewer received lower ratings compared to this group. Now, looking at the key findings, before jumping in, something I'd like to note here is that this is what stood out to us as survey researchers as being interesting. And like I said, there's over, there's 123 separate items that we ask evaluative questions for. So many, many other highlights to be gleaned, especially with y'all being the experts of the community. But with that said, our first key finding, safety in Aspen is a community asset. And the overall feelings of safety, along with safety-related services, can definitely, certainly contribute to the high quality of life experience in Aspen. More than 9 in 10 residents gave the city a rating of excellent or good for their overall feeling of safety. And nearly all residents giving, gave high marks to other feelings of safety in the community. This included from violent crime in downtown and commercial area during the day, as well as from property crime. Those three were higher than national averages. And then that designation to the right shows that those are also higher than comparison communities in Colorado. Any of those that doesn't include a higher or lower than to the comparison community just shows that it's similar to that subset. And along with those feelings of safety, a high proportion of residents also approved of safety-related services. Again, nearly all residents had high marks for fire services, as well as ambulance and emergency medical services. And then right around 9 in 10 approved of both police and crime prevention.
And I'll just add here, for police services in particular, want to, want to give them a shout-out that they ranked number one overall in the state with our custom benchmarks for the quality of police services.
Our second key finding, residents identify the economy as a potential area of focus. And a number of aspects of the economy in Aspen garnered positive marks from residents, including Aspen as a place to visit with 92% excellent or good. Aspen as a place to work with 67%. Economic health of Aspen at 62. And about half of residents had favorable views of both employment opportunities as well as the vibrancy of downtown and commercial areas. This included as well, a similar proportion of residents giving these marks to the overall quality of business and service establishments in the city.
I have a question. Overall economic health, is that based on growth? I'm trying to get a nexus between 62% think that it's overall economic health and how much of, I mean, our economy is built on growth. So if we have 62% feel that our overall economic health is good, does that mean that there are 38% that feel that we have too much growth?
That's a great question. I would say that certainly it's resident perception, and there would be a number of different factors that go into that overall economic health. I think growth is certainly one of the factors that would impact the number that we see here. I think other factors would be, you know, the variety of businesses that folks see, how long businesses tend to stay in business, how easy it is to access. And then certainly some things that are outside of city control, you know, like greater cost of living, as well as inflationary, things like that nature, I think definitely play a part in this item.
So I'd like to add to that, too. We, we couldn't make too many direct comparisons to the results of the 2022 Community Survey based on the change in survey vendor and the change in questions. The, a question about overall economic health was included in 2022, which makes a direct comparison here pretty straightforward. And for 2024, our residents were resoundingly more positive about overall economic health. In 2022, that number, that favorable rating was 41%. It's written, risen up to 62%.
And that's COVID area, era?
Correct.
Was this how this, was this how this question looked on the survey? It was rate each of the following in the Aspen community?
Yes, was under that umbrella question.
And all these were listed? And so, so did, was it ranked or rated?
They were rated on an excellent, good, fair, poor scale.
Excellent, good, fair.
And don't know, I should say, there's a don't know option.
Because it's, it's, what, what stands out to me here is it's interesting. The first, the first line is Aspen is a place to visit. But this is a household survey. So the thinking would be it's people that live here that are answering the survey. So they answer Aspen is a place to visit, highly ranking. But then the other questions are different. Because, for example, down at the bottom, vibrancy of downtown commercial area, that means, well, you could interpret it, that means to them, it's at a 50% rating, middle road. But if it's a great place to vi- visit, you would think the vibrancy of downtown commercial area is not that bad. Anyway, interesting. Did you have, and are you going to the next slide? Is it also related to the economy in Aspen or no?
Yes, the next slide is, yep. And continuing on that, that theme of the economy, items that were lower than the benchmarks in this facet tended to relate either to general affordability or shopping within Aspen. Such items that were lower than the national benchmarks included shopping opportunities, about 25%, variety of businesses and service establishments in Aspen, as well as the cost of living. Additionally, about one-third of residents reported that they felt the economy would have a positive impact on their family income the next six months, which was on par with national comparison communities.
And councilmembers, this was one of those results and slides that I was going to kind of look at in relationship to the airport issue that we just had. It's interesting because these, again, are resident or local households that are It's interesting because these again are resident or local households that are responding. And what you're seeing here is that the offerings aren't necessarily locally based, right? There's not great shopping opportunities unless you're looking for Prada and Dior and the rest. The variety of businesses and services and establishments in Aspen, again, I mean, we have a lot of high-end luxury stuff, but maybe not middle or bottom. And cost of living obviously gets really bad marks. And for me, you know, that is a function of somewhat of the tourist economy that we, that we have, where we're seeing our downtown rents out the roof, causing the establishments to move in and be in our downtown core. Our catering to luxury, high-end, top of season and like and less and less about local. So Ward, you were asking me about what I think about the growth impacts potentially at the airport. That's along the lines of what I'm, what I'm saying, it, it, it's potential to exacerbate. John?
Yeah, unfortunately, no real surprise here. I think the word we're looking for is super gentrification.
And one thing I like to note with the economy and great discussion, great questions. The sentiment towards or growing concern for cost of living and housing availability certainly isn't an issue that's specific to Aspen. It is something that I've seen grown in nearly all communities that I've worked with in the past year and a half, especially it started probably about two years ago. But in the broader national scale, certainly a concern that we've seen almost universally. This brings us to our next key finding, community design and housing availability may be an area of opportunity for Aspen. And similar to the economy, items within this facet did receive mixed results. A strong majority of residents gave excellent or good ratings to their neighborhood as a place to live with eighty-five percent giving this excellent or good ratings. The overall design or layout of Aspen's residential and commercial areas at seventy-seven percent, as well as public places where folks want to spend time, again, right around that three-quarter mark. That item specifically was higher than both the national and comparison community benchmarks. And along with this, a strong proportion, about two-thirds of respondents gave positive marks to both the preservation of historical and cultural character of communities, as well as well-designed neighborhoods. And items in this facet that asked about growth or housing tended to be lower than the national benchmark comparisons, which may be an area of potential opportunity for the city. Such items included the overall quality of new development in Aspen, which positively rated by about thirty percent of residents. Well-planned residential growth, about twenty-two percent. Well-planned commercial growth, availability of affordable housing, as well as the variety of housing options in Aspen. We're right around that ten to fifteen percent mark.
Looks like we need more affordable housing.
Our fourth key finding, residents praise both parks and recreation, as well as the natural environment in Aspen. The first element of this we'll look at is natural environment, and folks praise natural environment in the city. Every, nearly every aspect that we asked about, not even not including everything that we're able to fit on this slide, received marks that were higher than both national and community benchmark comparisons. This included the cleanliness of Aspen, air quality, Aspen open space, preservation of natural areas, as well as water resources.
Was there any similar polling done two years ago? Did this have a comparative category?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. The questions weren't asked in a way that I was comfortable making a direct comparison, which is why I was, I didn't mention it in the memo. At an anecdotal level, people remain pleased with the overall quality of the natural environment here. So it was strong in twenty-twenty-two and strong in twenty-twenty-four.
Was there any, if it moved at all, I'm looking at percentage points too or so, did you see any, any?
You know, there, when I reviewed the results of twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four, nothing struck me as notable. So I, I think it's pretty tight margins. And again, the questions we've moved. We, we, the questions were just different enough that, that I can't answer that question directly. Besides the overall, the overwhelming sentiment in the community about the natural environment was overwhelmingly positive both twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-four.
Thanks. And then the second aspect we have here, talking more about parks and recreation. Again, nearly all items in this aspect were either higher than both the national and comparison communities. So this included the availability of paths and walking trails, city parks, recreational opportunities, fitness opportunities, and the overarching recreational programs or classes. We saw nearly all residents give positive marks to all of these items. And then finally, residents appreciate customer service provided by city employees. And we did see strong marks given to nearly all aspects of that communication. Nearly eight in ten or just over eight in ten of residents gave positive marks to the overall customer service provided by city of Aspen employees. And then a very strong proportion as well, nearly two-thirds, excuse me, three-quarters of residents don't want to sell us short there, give positive marks to public information services, and nearly that two-thirds to treating residents with respect. We did see lower than average marks given to a few items in this facet. This included generally acting in the best interest of the community, treating all residents fairly, overall confidence in the city of Aspen government, as well as overall direction that the city is taking.
Joe, on this one. They are pointing out the obvious, but from the third one down, we're talking about nearly half of the respondents saying that this either fair or poor or don't know, right? And then the rest, two-thirds roughly, saying fair or poor or don't know.
Correct.
Not good, thanks.
And along with those standard questions that we ask in the NCS, we do provide a space that cities are able to put their own questions out to community. So these are the custom questions that Aspen asked. There were a combination of open-ended, as well as multiple choice. So that question three A is something that we added on to the standard three question, or question number three, I should say, as well as those other items listed there. First thing I'd like to cover in this aspect are those responses to the open-ended questions. So the first of which was for folks that remarked that they wouldn't recommend living in Aspen. We just kindly asked for them to specify why, if they'd like to in that space. The number one reason was the cost of living and affordability. This was followed by housing options and affordability by about twenty-two percent. And then it became a lower distribution from there. The next highest was community connectedness and culture. And then low proportions after that for governance, population growth density, as well as those who report other or not applicable. We also asked a question, if there's anything else that folks would like to share about the state of the community to explain, please kindly just one topic. We saw similar results to the options given here to this open-ended question. First was with about twenty-five percent of responses, concern for overall governance, followed closely by concern for affordable housing. From there, about fifteen percent, just under fixing the entrance to Aspen, concern for general cost of living and affordability, as well as again, community growth and development. From there, we saw a lower distribution for cultural economic divide, and then things that didn't quite fall into categories, as well as a very small proportion, but a notable one, concern for wildfire preparedness and other natural disasters.
And so just to reiterate here, these are the thematic summations of the open response comments, which were available as a link in the packet.
Next we'll look at, we asked folks to rate overall, how would they rate the effectiveness of the Aspen City Council? We saw a low proportion for excellent, but a very similar proportion of responses for all options thereafter. Thirty-four percent for good, thirty-seven fair, and around twenty-seven percent for poor. So again, a very near equal distribution for those options. And then finally, we asked folks if they had an issue or question with the city, their preferred way of interacting with the city. Number one was email, as well as in-person face-to-face. We allowed folks to select up to two responses for this. So if you see that doesn't add up to a hundred, that would explain why. But nearly half of all respondents preferred to either email or talk face-to-face. From there, about a third would call, prefer calling through telephone. And then from there, a more equal, lower distribution for the city website for texting and messaging. And then a smaller for Aspen three-one connect and others that didn't fall into one of the categories provided.
I just want to draw the direct connection here between the reason we asked this question and staff's work to improve the customer service experience that has been a council goal. So one thing we wanted to directly ask our community was how do you like to interact with city staff? And now we have it.
And again, just as I have the key findings listed up here again, I want to note that there are a variety of different key findings that can be pulled out from this data. Again, this is just what stood out to us as survey researchers, y'all being the experts of the community and having that further context. Many, many other highlights to be gleaned. But certainly would like to open it up for any additional questions that we have. And sure, we'd be happy to go back to any of the previous slides if there's any data we'd like to see again. First questions? Ward?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a question or a concern or what it is, but you know, our city council receives very low ratings. I want to know what it is that we can improve, how we can improve those ratings.
So we did not ask that question, right? I think the, what we look to, to the community survey for is to gauge sentiment. And then it's up to us staff and the councils to develop solutions from that.
Yeah, it, I mean, a granular question as to what specifically do you feel the council is doing poorly would be beneficial and helping opportunities to improve?
Yeah, so one, one thing that, you know, we, we can use the survey tool in the off-years is to ask specific questions, you know, that aren't as broad as the overall community survey. So asking follow-up questions to our community for things the council wants to know is certainly an option that we can work on in the near term.
My only kind of comment or question at this time is, is really about being effective in two years, you know? See how we can get more responses, that would be great. I was wondering about any demographic information. I, I have, I have some. But I was wondering if there was, was there anything else besides the ones that are shared in the report? Or was that all of them?
Yes, a great question. So we do report on demographics, though that is something that we report on outside of the PDF version due to the interactive nature of the demographics. So full demographic cross tabs can be found in both the Polco and Tableau versions of the report. That will cover, you know, the responses for each of those demographic groups broken out. And then there's also demographic cross tabs. So if we wanted to compare groups against each other, we can see how different demographic groups responded.
All right, so to wrap things up, I think, you know, what, what Joe and the community survey helped us see is there are five areas that merit, you know, continued focus that, that we've identified affordability, community design, commercial vibrancy, an overall sense of community here, and approachability of government. And I think the good news here is that we have begun work on all of these items already. And pretty much these five areas align pretty closely with council's existing goals, which is why we'll provide, plan to provide you updates on these projects through the year regularly scheduled updates on council goals, work plans. And then what this looks like next is just continuing to be proactive in our approach to our community, using this tool to, you know, ask smaller questions, shorter surveys in the interim for things that are of interest to staff and council, finding, you're continuing to host community events where we listen and make sure that, that the projects that we have underway are aligned with the greatest community need. But for right now, I think we've been able to have had a pretty robust response already.
John, can you talk about number two, community design a little bit? What you mean by that? I know we went over the survey responses on it, but what work have we done on that? Where do you think we could do better?
Sure, so I, I think at, at this phase, what we could do better is probably a different conversation. But what, what I have, you know, that I think we're already working on is of course the ongoing conversation around the entrance to Aspen and the important community design aspect there. I think some of the work that's been, that's been done around considering, consideration of land use code revisions to support community priorities around electrification, in particular, was something that, that stuck out to me. That's what I had as, you know, already underway. But I think as we can see from, you know, the, the overall NCS report, there remain concerns around, you know, well-planned residential, well-planned residential growth. And that it's, you know, going to continue to be a conversation that we need to design more solutions from.
And where are you inferring that residential growth is not well-planned?
From the results of the survey.
Question. There's one that.
And, you know, that, that is a, I, I want to be careful there, too, because while the overall, the overall number looks pretty low, right? With twenty-two percent having a favorable opinion of well-planned residential growth. You can see that number is similar to national and state benchmarks. So it is something that's generally, you know, gets low marks and, and we're no different there, but we're not worse than our peers.
And this is such a tricky one, because like what growth have we really had in residential and commercial in the last several years? What, what, it's just a little bit too broad of a question with not specific examples for people to comment on, so. I just don't want to make sure, I, I want to make sure that we're not going in a direction of further restriction on things that don't need further restriction.
Well, and, and it's interesting because you're right, this is, and the reason this gets low marks, no matter where you are or whatever, is because people on both sides of this as an issue would give it low marks, right? People that are not for regulation would say, oh, we got too much and it's low marks. And people that are like, you know what we need is more regulation? They'd be like, we, they give a little, so.
This is like feelings, not specifics.
And if you spend more time with the open responses in full, it's clear there are people on, you know, concerned on, on both sides of this that, that people are reacting to, you know, the, the amount of construction they see in town. And, and there's differing opinions on whether that's too much or not enough.
One thing to, to add, though, it's a great point, that it is, we're measuring perception. One of the examples I like to use of that is for street-related services. If we're doing a lot as a city to improve roads, it's going to be better down the line, and we've started construction. The things that folks see are orange cones, taking longer to work, getting to school, things of that nature. So there are, you know, it, it, there might be improvements being made, but it's that perception of like, oh, this is bad now. So certainly aspects that play into it. And then also communication and, you know, getting the word out on what is being done and allowing folks to have a good understanding and seeing that. and allowing folks to have a good understanding and seeing that and, you know, hopefully changing that perception.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Not a question, just comments.
Go right ahead.
Thank you for doing the survey and whatnot. My comment is that I, I didn't, it's really hard to interpret this because of what we just said. So if anything, I just wanted to say, how to effectively communicate with your city council and the use of Aspen 311? I just wanted to say, call, email, text, come to meetings. Don't expect change solely from angry letters to the editor by keeping your disdain to yourself or filling out surveys like this. Come to us, come to all of us, come to us individually. I like talking to people, but I don't know what, if anything, this, it doesn't change anything for me. It's nice to see the high marks, but anything that's like a low mark, I have no idea how to interpret it. So that's why I can't stress enough to this community, come to us, council@aspen.gov, sam.roz@aspen.gov. Our phone numbers are online, come talk to us, come to meetings. That is way more effective than, like I said, surveys, angry letters to the editor, or comments in this, which were once again, all over the place. So thank you so much. Did not learn much from this, other than the good marks, which I appreciate. But I just really wanted to reiterate how to effectively communicate with council. Please and thanks.
John?
I was kind of curious about the two percent who thought we did an excellent job.
You're delusional. Yeah, we'll just leave it at that, thanks.
I, I'd like to dovetail perhaps on Sam's comments that sometimes people will only go to Sam or, or me or Tori. I think that people should reach out to all council members to give, to, to give people that may not be on the confirmation bias side, a full balanced understanding of what the community feels.
And just to, just to reiterate on, on your comment about what to gain from, from the low marks. I, I think one of the, the struggles that, that people can sometimes have with surveys, right? Is, is like to Joe's point, you're, the point of a survey is to gauge perception and sentiment and not to, and not to identify solutions necessarily, right? That's, that's on staff and, and council to take what we've learned about sentiment, whether it's high or low, and build solutions from that. So what, what the survey does is it, is it tells us what our community is thinking, not how to solve individual issues.
And if I may add to that too, this is one data point. There are other ways, as, as John and Joe mentioned, off-years to gather more information, focus groups, community engagement, framework and initiatives. So it's one data point. And we also hope to do more trend analysis, so looking at trends. So every year you'll use the same survey and be able to establish trends and look back and look in the future. So I think as we continue to use Polco, that we'll have more of that information to be able to compare ourselves to with our survey results as well. And, and for the, for everyone's benefit, I know you mentioned that there's a link in the packet. The survey results dating back to 2013 are online on our website as well.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, one thought. If these results were opposite from what they were, right? We are doing really well. If they were opposite, you all would be really worried about this survey and really be having a different conversation, and it would matter to you, to you all differently. So I do just want to take a moment and celebrate, because a lot of things are going right. And as John's pointed out, there are some areas that we, we know, most of you have looked at this and said, okay, yeah, we know affordability, affordable business, et cetera, right? That's confirmation that you're doing the right things. So your community is saying yes, keep doing those things. And we do have some pointers to some things we need to do better as well. So just wanted to share that, thank you.
I'd like to add, one of my takeaways from the survey is we have a hyper-engaged populace here. And they keep a close eye on things, including us. So thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
All right, our third final item this evening is the U.S. Forest Service Administrative Site Update.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Jen Newton, Senior Project Manager for the City Manager's Office. This evening, we're here with a, a number of partners who actually are in the audience with me to talk about this parcel that is at the S-curves. Want to point out that the Forest, some members of the Forest Service are here with us, Jennifer Schuler and Stephen Elsman, and then Steve Scatterin from CMC. But there are a number of partners who've been working on this project, and just wanted to point that out. So what we're talking about is a partnership, potential partnership project for a 2.13 acre site that is at 106, or 806 West Hallam. And there's been a partnership that's been working on the potential redevelopment of this site. Forest, the Forest Service, the Roaring Fork Transportation Authority, CMC, Aspen Valley Hospital, Picking County, the Aspen School District. So all have been working in partnership on this potential redevelopment. So as you know, the site is located at the S-curves and includes the existing Forest Service uses. There are administrative offices and a visitor center on the site, along with a warehouse and maintenance facility and a bunkhouse. The area includes a mix of zone districts and land uses, including multifamily and single family. What we're really talking about here is use of this administrative site that is something that's allowed for under the Farm Bill. So the 2018 Farm Bill allowed for the use of underutilized administrative Forest Service sites that can be leased for local needs, including building affordable housing in exchange for in-kind contributions such as construction of housing and improvements to federal facilities. This shows the existing buildings that are on the site, which includes existing ranger housing. Bear with me just a second. So overall kite site considerations, there is existing vegetation on the site, including some fairy tale trees, the Si Johnson ditch. There are some vacated right-of-ways that are depicted on this site plan right here on this screen. And there are significant electrical and water utilities. And additionally, there are some steep slopes on the site in terms of development. Those things were taken into consideration in these kind of high-level concept plans. I want to take a minute to just point out that there is a switchgear, Vista Switchgear, which helps to regulate the overall power grid and prevent electrical overloading, which is located along the Eighth Street side of this. And then there also is a main electrical feed in the middle of the property that extends through the property from Seventh Street to Eighth Street and connects to that Vista Switchgear. Additionally, there is a 12-inch diameter water main line that is located adjacent to the electrical line, which is the main utility that provides redundancy for a large portion of the surrounding neighborhoods. And is assumed to need to remain in place in any development scenario. So a lot of these utilities are fixed and not easy to move, certainly anything's possible. But I think the utilities would prefer that, that they stay in place. And then just as I noted, in 1939, Aspen City Council vacated and abandoned Francis Street and the two alleyways, alleyways to the north and south of Francis Street for the block of the current U.S. Forest Service site. So all those partners, all those folks who we've been working with, got together and looked at redevelopment of this site and put in the uses or the, the number of affordable housing units that each of those anchor institutions would be interested in seeing on the site. And, you know, what would be helpful to those organizations as they're developing housing for those institutions. And as part of that, there was, you know, some potential development scenarios that were higher density than either of the, the options that I'm showing you now. The schematic planning work resulted in these two potential alternatives. Each includes a 36-bed bunkhouse and parking and Forest Service space. Alternative A includes 38 housing units and 74 total parking spaces. And then alternative B includes 57 housing units and approximately 100 parking spaces. Some of those parking spaces in the higher-density option are, they're subsurface. And so the exact design of that would be, we would need some additional civil and design work to be able to exactly identify exactly how many of those parking stalls would be underground. For the Forest Service space, each alternative assumes that the visitor center would be located off-site and has a slightly different amount of administrative and warehouse space. There's less U.S. Forest Service space in alternative B, which enables that slightly larger, denser housing on the site. And I'll just briefly also go over there's different mixes in terms of bedroom size and studio. This is a conceptual look at this. So the exact uses, the exact square footage inside are not inked, but the, this is using, we had an architectural firm that was part of the development of these conceptual plans. In the lower-density option, the building height is 25 feet. And in the higher-density plan, it's 32 feet. And I will give you, included in your packet were some renderings, and we'll go through some as well. The other thing to note about the high-density plan is that it assumes that that maintenance facility that would need to be replaced is replaced off-site. Proposed alternative A includes the 38 housing units, some warehouse space and administrative space. The bunkhouse units are located on the north side of the site. All parking is accommodated at the surface or in tuck-under stalls. The alley is reconnected behind Poppy's to create an east-west connection through the site. And the alternative maintains the location of the key utility infrastructure. Alternative B, this slide illustrates that 57 housing units, some administrative space. A key difference is that the building massing along Hallam is more consolidated when compared with alternative A, which uses more of the cadence of Poppy's along the street, the, the Hallam Street side. The bunkhouse units are located on the north side of the site. Parking is accommodated at grade and through underground parking, which is accessed... See if I can get my cursor to show. Right here, in, in this building right here. The alley is reconnected behind Poppy's, also creates that east-west connection. And again, maintains those key utility infrastructure in place. So as part of this work, the city worked with Concept One to complete a very rough order of magnitude for this, these two density options. So there would not, there would need to be a lot more development in terms of design to have certainty about these costs. But Concept One has done a lot of projects here and has looked at kind of the going rates. And so this is a, this is a, an order of magnitude guesstimate for what this would cost. So the lower-density option is about $40 million. There is an owner's contingency that is outlined there. And that does include design and consulting fees. And then in the higher-density option, it's just about $56 million.
Jen?
Yes?
Gross square footage of each option?
Let me see if I have that in another slide. Let me, let me just go through this and see if it's in there. It's not, I will look that up. I, actually, there may be a slide that has it, hold on, just let me back up.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it has the Forest Service, but not the overall? I will look it up.
Yeah, what I'm ultimately trying to get at is what the construction costs proposed are per square foot?
Yeah, got it.
Thanks.
But the, but the high-density... Some of the high-density was because of the off-site facility. John, you have a question?
Yeah, just, I'm not, it's not super important, but I noticed on low-density, the Hallam Lake, or I'm sorry, Hallam Street-facing properties, are those modular? Is that what we're thinking, or?
This doesn't identify the type of construction. Although it does have some components that we assume are important. For example, there's solar that's depicted, and I think that that was part of the large-scale scoping of this. So the smaller, the lower-density is, is about $800 a foot. And the higher-density is 760-ish, 76, 760 and change a foot, if that's helpful.
Thanks.
I'll wander back to the, these slides. So one of the things that was mentioned in your packet is that this is contingent on the continuation of the Farm Bill. So the authorization for the use of these sites, these leasing of the sites for these consideration is something that is outlined in the Farm Bill. We're on an extension, so the Farm Bill generally lasts for five years. This is the sixth year. It is coming to its expiration. Anticipate that there will be a new omnibus Farm Bill. Don't have exact certainty about when that may happen. So because that deadline is approaching for the extension, I would assume that that happens in the next probably seven days, because it needs to, to continue for all of those reasons that we have the Farm Bill. There are some components of the existing legislation that we are, we would want to see changed. In particular, the, the lease length, which is 30 to 50 years. I think I mentioned in my, in my packet that there is a, the first one of these that got inked across the nation was in Summit County, and that one was for 50 years. So I think that what we would see is, you know, the cost of construction here and the, the, the anchor institutions that would be part of this project are not going anywhere. They're, you know, have-to-haves in the community. So we think that a longer lease term is a good bet. So that's one of the things we're looking for in that Farm Bill. We understand that it is part of the Farm Bill that's under consideration to extend that lease term to 100 years. The other piece of that is that we would need to have this off-site consideration, because in both of these options, we assume that the visitor center component of this project is accommodated off-site. And in the higher-density option, the maintenance facility is also accommodated off-site. What we're looking for this evening from you is to take your temperature on the project overall and certainly those density considerations. I'm happy to go back to any of those slides. Obviously, this project is, we see it as really important because all of the folks who are partners in this project have a desperate need for housing. And also that the Forest Service is important to this community, provides service to the maroon bells and the wilderness areas around us. And so they're certainly important, like to see them stay here and, and thrive. So looking at the density to see kind of what your feelings are about both of those. The other thing is that because this is federal land and the Forest Service isn't beholden to the city's land use processes, we're looking to kind of take your temperature on where you would like to see... you would like to see this process go, understanding that there would have to be a negotiated MOU that would be part of guiding how that, how that looks in the future. So looking to have your agreement that we can go ahead and negotiate that MOU. One of the things that I don't think I mentioned is that I think CMC and Aspen are looking to kind of lead this project on behalf of the partners for this next phase. So one of the things that could happen, there's a couple of different options in terms of land use process, could go through that major public project process or kind of mirror that, knowing that there's going to be some stipulations that are in that MOU about what that looks like from a regulatory aspect. I don't think that the Forest Service is going to just say, yes, you can go through your regular process, and Aspen City Council gets to say yea or nay. One of the other options is to have it go through a location and extent process. CMC has used that effectively in other jurisdictions. They've used it in Rock County and Summit County, and from my perspective, as a former community development director, have done a really good job and are good partners. If you have other questions about that, Mr. Scatterin is here and probably can answer any questions that you have about it. One of the other options is that this could go through the leasing process and the federal NEPA, and then go straight to building permit, and that's what's happening in Summit County. One of the other options that we could pursue here is, once there's a negotiated MOU, have a sketch plan, which is non-binding, come through the process. So with that, I'm going to stop talking and answer any questions that you have.
And then you want a little bit of input on some of this, on the density and stuff?
The density, yeah.
My first question for you is, is there an, is there an in-between density plan? And the reason I ask that is because I thought that it said the high-density had three-story buildings, but maybe the low-density did not?
Yeah, so in order to accommodate all of the uses on-site, there were considerations that were taken into account. So the lower-density plan, Alternative A, has a, you know, it's not a tall building. And then, as you can see flashing back and forth, Alternative B has, in some of the buildings, there are three stories. So that's, again, if I can get my cursor to work, that's
Yep.
These right here and this right here.
Because I guess the reason I'm asking is because the big difference between the two plans, aside from the density, is the location of the facility, the warehouse or maintenance facility, or whatever it's called. And so I was wondering if there was the opportunity to do the three-story elements and keep that facility on-site, you know, a little best-of-both worlds, I guess. And I say that with a question mark, because I don't really know, is that where the maintenance facility should be? Is that a desire of the USFS? That, you know, that part I don't know. But from the look on your face, you're like, yeah, maybe.
I think one of the things that you always see with increased density is that it drives parking. So this is not parked one-for-one, but there is consideration for parking, because we understand that that will be a concern for the community and a concern for the neighborhood. And CMC has said that they would have the, whatever the minimum is that they would need to have, and house those cars off-site at the CMC location, so outside of the roundabout. But one of the components of this plan is that it does have underground parking, and so we would probably have to take another look at it. I will say that we spent a lot of time with Design Workshop and CCY going through these plans, and I think parking is one of the top considerations, is kind of as you increase that density, that also increases the need for, for parking.
Ward?
Yeah, number of things. First of all, pardon me, I want the city of Aspen to be a participant in this, to continue our involvement in this. I think the location is great. I question if the maintenance facility is moved, or moved to, and whose expense is that? Does the Forest Service can pay for that, or are the developers of this project going to be paying for that? And again, what Tori says is, where would you like that facility to be? The overall questions I have are density. I support, I mean, this is an opportunity to look at things from a clean slate. I support more density, but that probably weighs against the neighborhood acceptance. I support more height because of the more density, and I question if this is an opportunity to limit parking on-site, to give us more beds instead of parking spaces. And I think, as all of us know, to go subgrade on parking spaces is really expensive. Curious on what Steve has to say about parking off-site for some of the CMC portion of this, so that it's an opportunity where we could explore that you don't have parking by right. Hi, Steve.
I'm still getting used to a council chamber that has natural sunlight streaming through it, so.
Unusual.
Pretty sweet, huh?
Really sweet. As Sam noted earlier, the public should be here enjoying this marvelous facility, so. Yeah.
You just get suntanned sitting.
Apparently. It's like I'm on vacation. I guess, thank you, and thanks for kind of entertaining this discussion. Ward, I've, it would be CMC's interest to abide by a parking maximum to limit, absolutely limit the number of cars. And I've said that CMC would park its portion of cars on our campus, making it a minimal impact, transportation impact. And as far as the other partners go, I can't speak on their behalf, but Raft is part of this, and Rafta would need parking, because it's their, their drivers who need to get to the facility at 5:00 AM to operate the buses that we all need. So there is some need for parking. Also, the hospital's a part of this as well, and they may have need for emergency services to get from the site to the hospital.
And because we don't own, the farm bill, the major thing, of course, is the term of the lease. More interested, not interested in a thirty-year term, but more interested in seventy- to a hundred-year term. But because we won't be owning the land, I'm assuming these are all rentals?
They are rentals.
John?
Yeah, since we're just beginning this discussion, I want to be on the record as saying I would rather have higher density than lower density. We'll see how it turns out. I'd like to see some in-between, but I see benefits to both. And I'm aware of the farm bill issues. Hundred-year lease would definitely be better for us if we're going to be investing a lot of money in something like this. We would want to have an agreement that lasts longer than fifty years. And I did talk to Senator Bennett's aides and Representative Vagus' aides as well about this, so hopefully we're being heard at the highest level. I'm curious to know if we could move, if it would be possible to move the maintenance stuff to a different location that's also owned by the Forest Service, up one of the drainages where most of the maintenance is, I'm assuming, done, up Maroon Creek or Castle Creek?
Yeah, we should.
Can you come up?
We should introduce ourselves, too.
Let me grab a chair.
My name's Stephen Elsperman. I'm a staff officer for the White River National Forest out of the supervisor's office. I'm in charge of a number of different resource areas, including lands and conveyance, and so that's why I'm here today. And I'll let Jennifer introduce herself.
Will you point those microphones at your
Thank you. Did you hear all that?
That's good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Schuler. I'm the deputy district ranger on the Aspen-Sopras Ranger District of the White River. So our staff live here, and we work out of those facilities.
You bet. And then I'd like to say, thanks so much for that wonderful presentation, Jen. That was a lot of very complicated information, really well put together, because this is a little bit of a non-traditional type of approach. Thank you. In order to answer your question about where that maintenance facility may or may not go, we've addressed that and explored that a little bit with the team. And there are some options for off-site locations. We are exploring some options for off-site Forest Service-owned property locations currently. That's been a little bit newer to the mix and something that's, we're still kind of in the middle of, but we do think there may be some opportunity there. And we've also looked at other opportunities with some of the other partner agencies, specifically Picken County, where that may be a possibility for existence.
Awesome. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. This is more about fitting more housing on here than making your life more difficult. Thanks.
No problem.
The other thing to add to what Stephen was just mentioning is that, in addition to that maintenance facility, if that were moved off-site, we'd also be able to move our office facility as well, to keep those congruent and together. But yeah.
You did ask a question about cost, so we would anticipate that that would be part of the cost of this project. So the cost of that maintenance facility off-site is considered in those kind of big estimates, but it does not include land someplace else. So cost of the construction, but not a place to put it.
Bill? Thanks. First couple of questions, Jen, are, could you tell, there's been a lot of discussion about leasing. Can you talk about what's being leased and who's leasing it? And I guess, let me ask my second question, because you may want to take these in a different order, but could you talk about some of the basic concepts that are being explored in terms of this partnership? There's a lot of cooks in the kitchen, so to speak, and what are the various partners' roles contemplated?
So I don't know that we have identified roles as far as who will, you know, have which, you know, parts of the lease, who would be the master leaseholder, those kinds of things. The Forest Service process and the farm bill process does outline that the offer of first refusal goes to the city or to the county for the leasing opportunity. And then there's a process to actually look at what is being requested to be leased, so all of those buildings. And then that would be the offset for the use of the land potentially, so that's that consideration language that's in the farm bill itself. And so there's an appraisal process. So we don't have the level of design that we would need to get to, to get to that appraisal piece. And there's a lengthy, it's twenty-nine steps for the Forest Service, includes a NEPA, includes the Phase One environmental. It includes the, as I mentioned, that development of that appraisal, and then the actual leasing language. So some of those things haven't been identified yet. We're on about step six of those twenty-nine, and, but if you look at the other projects that either have already gone through the process and have that lease, or are working their way through the process, the idea is that the improvements offset the cost of that land. And I don't know if there's anything else that you want to add?
No, I don't think so. That was really well put together. I guess maybe just one thing, that those steps are certainly important to note, but there is a, there is a track record of success on how that can happen, so even though it sounds overwhelming, it's not insurmountable.
All right, so in broad layman's terms here, or I should say, in layman's terms, like broadly schematically, the city would lease, lease number three buildings from the Forest Service on a long-term basis?
So there would be a development pro forma. That's what's happened in Summit County, where they put out an RFP for development partner and are looking at, certainly there's local dollars that are going into that project, and there is the lease consideration, but because it's affordable housing, we understand that that won't cover the cost of construction and ongoing operation. That project, I know, put in money, or requests for money for grants through some of these, these state and federal opportunities that are available for affordable housing. So I think it's a mixed capital stack that is building this project and then operating it. Who exactly is the operator going forward? I think that that piece has not been determined. So in the case of Steamboat Springs, they have the Yampa Valley Housing Authority that is assumed to be assuming that lease and developing that project. So they did the RFP on behalf of the city, which is exercising that right of first refusal. And obviously, the Forest Service, and Stephen and Jennifer may have more information about that.
I think that's well said. I'd say that the, in regards to the Forest Service's interest in that, you know, this is our, we're the property sort of component of this, for sure. And we have limited capacity to plan, design, and operate a facility like this. But we have a, we do have that sort of component of interest and desire to be in the community, and we're the stewards of the land, and we're the stewards of the resources here. So in so much that we can participate in this based upon our capacity to use the land administratively for this function, that's kind of our, our role. And I would say also, a lot of intellectual capital to help figure that out through the whole processes that Jen described, including the NEPA requirements and the leasing requirements, which are our technical ends that we would also participate in.
Hang on, guys. I have marginal incremental clarity here. So someone is going to be the developer of this entire project?
That's right. So
To be identified, that's not been contemplated yet. Is that right?
It hasn't been completely identified. What, what we're looking to do is move this forward through the process with Aspen and CMC kind of leading the project. It could be that we do exactly what they did in Summit County, which is have a development partner. So put out an RFP, have a development partner that puts together a pro forma and looks at how this, these buildings can be built, and ultimately builds and, you know, I don't know if they are actually the ones who are, if they're maintaining it moving forward, but that developer essentially developing it and building that pro forma. So that's one option. We haven't gotten to that level of detail on this project yet.
Okay, got it. So that, that entity, or that developer, or whoever it ends up being, develops the entire site, including the buildings that are dedicated to the US Forest Service exclusively, right?
That's correct.
So the buildings labeled three in these two proposed plans, schematic plans, are the things that are up for grabs for everyone else?
Yes.
Is that right? So all these different partners? Okay, so could you go back to your screen with all the different partners' logos on it?
Logos, yep.
Or what names, either way?
I do want to add, too, just to clarify, in that the Forest Service had about four units that would also be within that same building, but the details on that haven't been developed yet. So there is a little bit of mixed use there.
In the low-density, this was thirty-something units in the building threes, and the
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, and the high-density?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. Minus four in either scenario?
Yes.
Because those would be for the Forest Service only?
And there is still bunkhouse units, thirty of which are identified for the Forest Service, and six had been identified for us at the city of Aspen.
Okay, so what's being contemplated on, who gets what with this big page of all these different partners?
I think that's something that we wanted to see clarity about, whether or not there was agreement to move forward with this and to continue this process. And there will be a resource asked at some point in the future to further develop the design documents. So looking to kind of get to the next step of this before some of those things are identified. The, the original ask from all of the partners was greater than either the thirty-eight units or the fifty-seven units would accommodate. And there, there is potential that, you know, depending on the final look of this project, maybe not all of these partners stay in the project. We would love to see that they all stay in this project, because everybody here on this list needs housing.
Yeah, that's not lost on me. But I am really concerned that there's too many cooks in the kitchen here and that this will be a mess. Seems like something where one person should really be leading it. I don't know if the city of Aspen's the appropriate person or entity to be doing that.
So I will say that because of the, the authority allows for that first right of refusal to go to the city, I would anticipate that in some way, we're going to need to be a part of through this process in order for it to a partner through this process in order for it to come to fruition.
Yeah, I'd cut on to that. But I just keep going back to, you know, what a poor job municipalities in general or government entities in general do in developing housing, including the City of Aspen. And when you add in all these other governmental or quasi-governmental entities, seems even more messy and less efficient. So I'm concerned, but I also.
I will say that CMC has done a, a good job of bringing housing out of the ground and, you know, I think what we're looking at is that Aspen and CMC continue to run, you know, run with the project and maybe reengage those partners when we've made some additional headway on the specifics of this project.
All right. I, I think in terms of feedback, I think I prefer the low-density option. I think it's more compatible with the adjacent neighborhood. And I'm, I think that the cost estimates don't bake in the incremental costs for the subgrade parking at all. I think that's far too small of a delta between the two per square foot estimates. So I think that's, that option will cost a lot more in the end than the lower-density option. Thanks.
Hey, I want to get everybody's comments before coming back for additional. Sam?
Appreciate that. For this conversation, I'll just value signal and say that higher density makes a lot of sense. It's within the S-curves. It's a great spot for it. There's not that many places to build housing within the S-curve, so I think that's a huge deal. I believe in especially Ward's logic when it comes to parking. However, I will say, when you underpark a place like that, you might risk neighbors getting upset when people go park their cars in the street anyway. So I wouldn't necessarily underpark this. But once again, early stages, I'd like to see it go forward. I'd like to see a long lease. I'd like to see higher density. And then we'll see what comes back to us. But as far as this being a good opportunity for the community, I believe it very much is.
Thank you. Okay. Because John, I think has spoken once, but I, I have more questions.
He did as well.
Okay. I want clarity on the, this is federally owned land and we've seen it previously where the lots aren't, they're not divided by the city, that the, you, this government, federal government has more control over this. I want to know exactly, does our land, the City of Aspen's land use code apply to this property? Are, you know, the, the zone districts, are those defined by the federal government or by the, the city?
So this is federal land and so the land use code doesn't apply. However, I think it's been the intention of the, the partners to, to the extent that's possible, meet the land use code. And one of the questions that we have here is process. So the major public process is the process that probably if, if there were not all these partners and it was just a City of Aspen project that you would be asking us to go through. The location extent process is something that CMC's used successfully elsewhere and could be an opportunity for this parcel in terms of development. Again, I think all of these things are going to be part of a negotiated MOU, so we'll have to have some of those conversations before we can give you exact clarity. But in the case of Summit County, the project went, did, some of, kind of got to where we got to in terms of having some renderings and having some understanding of what can fit on the site, some understanding of what the utilities are, had some public engagement component of a process, and then started that leasing process. And then ultimately went through the NEPA, which has additional public process. And then once that lease was signed, then now they've gone to construction drawings and they're anticipating going straight to building permit. So that's also an option.
Hasn't the county used location extent for, say, the courthouse extension, expansion? And that's a faster process than what the city used, say, for City Hall? Yeah, just to understand that if the city is leasing the property, which is what the ultimate proposal is, then you have control over the process. The, the federal government would not be asserting their preemptive rights under that scenario because they're leasing it to us and the city would then have control of that process. Now, there are several processes under our code that you can pursue or if you want to delegate certain authority to CMC or, or the county or whomever, then they can exercise location and extent powers. But we have processes that as the lessee, you could designate that we would follow.
Yeah, so this is a total, totally different than any development I've seen previously and that is federal land. And so my, some of my questions are, do we have to go through an entitlement process to develop this property with whatever conceptual number of buildings and site plan we have? Is that an entitlement process or is that a memo of understanding between the participants and the federal government?
Well, I wouldn't suggest that the city would be using its, trying to use the federal preemptive powers to, to entitle this construction. There are processes like the location and extent that are shorter. They give the, the powers that are pursuing the matter, the authority to, to not accept certain conditions that are, that are submitted by either the city or the city's constituent bodies, PMZ or whatever. But, you know, a lot of this has to be discussed further. But what I would like to just emphasize is that you wouldn't be relying on federal preemptive powers. I don't think you even could if they leased it to the city. And that's, that I think is the key.
And it's, we're leasing the land and then developing, anything we develop on the land, we being, all of these are part of these partners that are listed here. We not, I'm not referring to the city, but we the partners that develop it. We put the, the money towards the buildings, but the buildings aren't leased. I mean, it's not part of the leases. We were just leasing the land and developing it. Is that correct?
So it's, the consideration is the things that are being built. And so it's, you're not paying for the land, you're not paying for the ongoing lease. You're essentially paying for that with the building of these assets that are eventually owned, you know, or they're owned by the federal government. So I don't know that that answers your question, but I think it's, you know, it's a complicated governance, but I do think that we've seen that it works.
And so just for clarity from a real base level, from my understanding is that we're going to be leasing the land, it gets developed and those properties, as the lease is over, belong to the government, those buildings?
Yes.
The federal government?
Yes.
And, and I, you know, acknowledge Bill's concern for higher density in the neighborhood. And this comes back to the previous topic about community survey, where there's a big desire for workforce housing, but there's also a desire for well-designed neighborhoods. So we have conflicting values working here.
Ward, I want to follow up a little further. I, you, you asked the difference between the city, the county offices and the city offices. Understand that the city chose to go through a process that was much more extensive than what a central public facilities process would have allowed you to do.
I acknowledge that, yeah.
Those are tours you made. And you still would have that.
And one thing, one, I don't know if this is helpful, but the first right of refusal is not assignable, but the lease is. So eventually, the lease isn't something that could be assigned.
Which theoretically you're doing through this process with all these partners.
John?
Yeah, I just want to give a tremendous thank you to the Forest Service. This is a huge opportunity for our whole community, these seven entities right here. This could be really the last big parcel that we can develop inside the roundabout. And I would like to look into the possibility of reducing our parking minimums just to get more, more living people on that site, if possible.
Thanks. You've heard a little bit of direction. Yes, we're in favor of continuing to pursue the opportunities here. You've heard a council majority supporting a higher density. For me, I, I temper that a little bit. I'm, I'm not looking for the maximum density. I, what I didn't see in here is comparatives. I didn't see, you know, what, what the density works out to per acre and that kind of thing that we see. There's a comparative up top there. So for me, I, you know, my first question is about that maintenance facility warehouse thing. And then, you know, I'm somewhere in the, whatever is accommodatable there, you know, I don't want, I don't need the highest density, but I want something that fits and fits appropriately. That's, that's what's most important to me. What else was your question about process? Process. You didn't hear from others very much, but it sounds like we, it sounds like we have a lot of questions about the process. Do you need an either-or at this time? You're, we're talking about?
If you give us the head nod to start negotiating, let's start there and we'll, we'll come back with something.
Yes, head nods. Just start negotiating. Let's do this. Was there anything else, Jen?
I think that was it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you to you, Steve.
Thanks, Tori.
This has been, what, decades in the, in the making? Stephen, great to see you. And we appreciate you guys being here and being a partner with us in this. I echo what Ward says. This has been a long conversation and the, the branches are bending in our, in our favor for maybe getting something done here that's a benefit to the community and a lot of great organizations, including USFS. So many thanks.
Thanks, Tori.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is a conclusion of our agenda for this evening. Thank you to those that were watching. We are back again tomorrow night with a regularly scheduled meeting, which means that we take the public comment at the start of our meeting. Please come see us at City Hall. Once again, thank you as always to Grassroots. Have a great evening.